Where was everyone else when this community was being treated unfairly? I didn't see any of them. I didn't see Brad, I didn't see Zel Noomari, I didn't see Andrew Cuomo, I didn't see Blake, I didn't see any of them. These are new friends, you need to let them know I'm an old friend. I didn't just stop coming to this community.
This story was reported by the Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society. The mayor's meeting in Brooklyn New York was held on Friday night. The mayor Eric Adams told the citizens of Pakistan to withdraw from the town hall meeting. The Pakistan Council and New York City City Council members were also arrested. Police Department, Fire Department, Department of Small Business Services, Department of Sanitation, Department of Citywide Administrative Services, Taxi and Llamas Commission, Department of Education, and the mayor's office members were arrested. The Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society members arrested more than 15 people. The town hall meeting started with a prayer.
American National Anthem sung by Khamis Shah.
Pakistan's community anthem was played. And then the American National Anthem. The program began.
Pakistani Law Enforcement Society started back in 2005 with 175 NYPD officers. When society was created, our goal was to bring awareness to Pakistani community and bring more Pakistani community personnel to NYPD. At this time, I would like to request not other, our president Detective Rohil to the stage.
The president Rohil Khalid said to the mayor Eric Adams.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salaam alaikum wa salaamualaikum warahmatullahi. Good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to NYPD Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society Third Town Hall Meeting. Before we start this event, I want to acknowledge honorable New York City Mayor Eric Adams. Sir, please come at the stage as people want to see you. Before I move on, I just want to acknowledge a few more people and I would like to request them to come to the stage. The Muslim Auto Society President Deputy Inspector Mohit Dr. Please come at the stage. And he also was the first Pakistani captain, so he's our proud leader. Thank you for service sir. The next person, everybody knows, mayor called him once, the real warrior, the Muslim liaison for Pakistani and Muslim community, Atiyas Khan, please come at the stage. Last but not the least, another leader who is a proud Pakistani community, Deputy Inspector Misbah Noor, please come at the stage. We start the town hall meeting, remember first Pakistani town hall meeting was March 2020. Before that, Pakistani community don't know too much about the town hall meeting, what they can ask, and what are their rights. So pals vote from the day one, working hard, and we achieved that much and we have over 775 members in uniform. And I think that was a great achievement. I would like to acknowledge my board members, Vice President Asad Anwar, Even Konia, Captain Atishan Khan, Sergeant Anant, Sergeant Faisal Ejas, Correspondent Secretary Mahran Fias, Secretary Pokar Ali, and Treasurer Muhammad Isher. And all the trustees, thank you for your hard work, and that's the reason this hall is full, become a big great work. Thank you guys. Tonight is special for multiple reasons. We have honorable Mayor Eric Adams with us, but he's not the only one, he brought his entire team. I don't think on the Afghan history, we ever seen that many executives and commissioners from each and every department for the Muslim Pakistani community. We have a DSNY superintendent Stefan Caruso with us. DSNY chief John Gabriel. DSNY inspector Sunny Presha Police. SBS Commissioner Sir Ross, Mr. Ross. And the first time, we also have TLC Deputy Commissioner for Uniform Services, Beryl with us. FDNY Deputy Assistant Chief Christopher. Thank you sir. And Department of Education Kevin, Mr. Kevin is with us, Department of Education. There were a lot of questions about the Board of Education and Department of Education, so I think, thank you sir, it's the first time whole community gonna see, you know, and they have a lot of questions for you. At help NYPD, we have 66 precinct commanding officer Captain Kadet Harad. Brooklyn South Inspector Pankusov. And for community up here, none other than Chief Lucy Taylor, who they have stepped out. Thank you everyone. Before we move on, I want to bring something to everyone's attention. This town hall meeting is just not a town hall meeting. This is the awareness which the Pakistani community needed for the future. I don't know when the first Muslim came into the United States, I have no idea. I'm sure it's over 100 years. I heard the first Pakistani came in 1940s before the Pakistani reform, but later on, where he from, he moved, his family moved to Pakistan, he was an upstate. One thing I remember, it was everyone's dream, they want to hear Azan. We also have a DCAST Commissioner Lewis Molina with us. It was a dream to hear Azan. The first time the Muslim community heard the Azan was when our brother passed away, police officer Abid Fias, we heard about Azan on Coney Island. That was the first time, it was not official. It came to the honorable mayor's attention. He had a team who just worked for the Azan, and I remember Deputy Mayor of now, Kedadi, he made it approved, the helpful mayor. And now, you can name the Azan on the loudspeaker in Ramadan and every Friday. And I think that's the biggest achievement in the history. I don't know how many mayors came before, I don't know how many mayors gonna come later on, but this will be remembered for rest of every Muslim's life. They will remember that, and I think that's a big achievement, and we respect that. Not only that, I remember when Mayor Adam was borough president. There was an incident happened in France, somebody used disrespect word for our prophet Muhammad Suma Allah. I don't know what to do, I picked up the phone, I called this gentleman, Deputy Inspector Mohit Dr. And said, "We need to do a press conference." I don't know what we can do or not, he said, "Go for it." The next person, Eric Adams. There was no other elected official, Muslim, non-Muslim, nobody was standing with us, but this person. And I remember his word, what he said, and I think that will shock everyone. He said, it's recorded, you can find on YouTube, he said, "He will not step into that country till the leader of that country apologized to the Muslims." Nobody did to us that, for that reason, I respect this person and I standing with him every time, because nobody done that in the past. There was a handful of people, and that mean a lot, and I remember, and I remember, I will tell that to my kids, my grandkids, so this is a big thing, you guys didn't know that before. He never advertised that, he don't do that. Because the religious, you don't do that, you know, you don't, you don't want fame like that, but he's a lot of other stuff, that's the stuff I know. You guys didn't know that before, so we all witness, and I'm sure it's recorded, that's why I'm saying for everyone. We need the people like him. We need to support the people who stand with the broken class people, because we need to upgrade our class. If it's now or never. I can stand up for the election too and all those things, but what we need, we need people who care about us. Before, there was, 15 years ago, we don't have that many leaders in NYPD. Now, just the Pakistani community, we have 10 executives. We have 10 executives, and we have two deputy inspectors, and I think that's a big achievement. And we seen it in this era, the last three years. And if we got more time, we got more people like that, I think the sky is the limit. One thing, and which I observed, as a community member, people complained, this person didn't do this, this person didn't do that. But in my experience, if you bring anything to the mayor's attention, that will be taken care. A perfect example is when Abid Fias situation happened. His line of duty was denied. We came to the mayor's office, we brought it to his attention, and we all know the result. It took 10 months of because, okay, another leader, we seen that our brother, he got a lot of duty, stepped up, he deserved it. He did in his power whatever he can. Now, it's up to us, what we gonna do, how we gonna do, when we gonna do. You guys have questions, I'm sure, ask questions directly, he will answer. One thing about him, he don't shy, he will answer. If you don't have the answer, he got his team. So ask the team. We also have a Fire Department New York Deputy Commissioner Jim Hardy with us. I remember my vice president, he said one thing, he said, "We did the Pakistani Heritage Month, it was never done before, we did it in the historical building, and one police plaza. And with the help of the mayor, if God will, Inshallah, pals, and with all the community leaders, we will do the Pakistani Heritage Month in the Gracie Mansion." That was never done before, we will do it. Before we move on, and if you guys have any questions, you will go after that once, Mr. Eric Adams. Same few words, sir, please come at the stage, honorable New York City Mayor Eric Adams.
Sir, ladies and please, you don't, you don't scare me, I, for you. You know, being mayor is a humbling experience. It's a very humbling experience. You're not black enough, or you're too black. You're not Muslim enough, or you're too Muslim. You're not Jewish enough, or you're too Jewish. You don't help the poor enough, you don't help the rich enough, you begin to understand that your name is not mayor, it's not enough. It's a constant battle. And I'm not a new friend. I do not need a GPS to find Coney Island Avenue. I know this community so well, and I spent many, many years here. I was here in 2008, when the young men of this community were pulled out of their homes, and many were placed on Third Avenue in the federal penitentiary. And I could not get anyone to stand with me, when I stood on Third Avenue, it's up the street, and called for those young boys to be returned back to their communities. I was alone, I was threatened. I was a cop at the time, and people told me, "Your career's in jeopardy." But I knew it was the right thing to do because I have a son. And I don't know what I would have done if in the middle of the night, myself would have been pulled away. And many of you are prospering right now from this community. But this was not always the Coney Island Avenue. Go back and saw that businesses were decimated after 2001. And people fled, and they no longer wanted to be here in this country because they believed being a Muslim in itself was a crime. And they decided to leave the community instead of being armed. And a group of police officers came to me, when we were protecting the city, and they came to me and said, "Eric, we can't even protect our women at home and our daughters at home because of when the hijab, they're being attacked and brutalized as they walk the streets." And I took those officers to my attorney, and we sat down together, and he helped incorporate them for the Muslim society that still is in place today. But it didn't stop there. I became a state senator, and there was a senator named Greg Ball, you go look it up, Senator Ball. He would attempt to talk negatively about the Muslim community. And Greg stated he was going to desecrate the Quran on the floor of the state senate, and then I said, "If you do that, I'll knock you out on the steps floor of the state senate." But it didn't stop there. Someone put out the fire, "Kill a Muslim Day." Go back and ask your elders about it. And they stated that they wanted to kill a Muslim in the community in the city. And I walked the streets of Third Avenue, the Bay Ridge, for Muslim leaders, and stated, "This would not happen in the city that I'm the borough president of." And you must talk to Brother Najeeh and Debbie, and I tell you of the day of a sister going into Staten Island, and she was on the bus when the hijab, and someone threatened her while she was on the bus. We organized and went to that same bus, and we took the bus across to Staten Island Bridge and sent a loud message that our sisters in the city, no matter who they are and what religion they are, they will be treated with the respect and dignity that they deserve. So it goes on and on and on. And here you had a candidate that was asked, were they ever in a mosque? And they couldn't even tell you if they were. There has never been a mayor in the city of New York that has been in your mosque more than I have been. No one has been in your mosque. I am not a hidden friend. I'm not a friend that hides when I'm with a community of all communities. And not only that, do your own analysis. Yes, I've been to Africa seven times, yes, I've been to South and Central America, yes, I've been in Europe, yes. But tell me, what other mayor went to Saudi Arabia, went to Jordan, went to Oman? Tell me what mayor respect your community enough to go and see your community and where you came from. And we were on a trip to go to Lahore, Pakistan during the explosion, the civil support for the people. Commissioner Molina, I have people now who stop me on the street, call me murderer, call me Islamic phobic, call me all of these names, because they were not around when I was in the field with them. Many of your children don't know my history, and instead of embracing the person that jump aside by side with you, they depict me as someone that's against the Muslim community, and they don't look at the records of those who call themselves elected officials and never stop with your community. I've always been here, the record will speak for itself. Go through an analysis, and you will ask yourself, "Where was everyone else when this community was being treated unfairly?" I didn't see any of them. I didn't see Brad, I didn't see Zel Noomari, I didn't see Andrew Cuomo, I didn't see Blake, I didn't see any of them. These are new friends, you need to let them know I'm an old friend. I didn't just stop coming to this community. And look at this moment, this is such a significant moment. Back during the 90s, during the 2000s, man, you didn't get this. I'm so proud of these brothers from this organization and what you're doing. You didn't see that, we were caught for eating in 2006, 2007, and you're lucky if you had 10 people. And now these brothers have started to recruit. There weren't Pakistani members of the New York City Police Department, there weren't brothers and sisters from the other Muslim community in the department, and in fact, they were afraid to join the department because many of your mosques were being infiltrated, and people were in there listening to you as you worship. But these brothers took their pain and they turn it into purpose, and they empower your community, and when you reach this level of prominence, you would never go back. You would never go back. It's time for this community with your power, your numbers, and your strength, it's time for you to run a candidate for a city. It's time for you to run a candidate for a city. It's time for you to run a candidate for a council. It's time for you to be the district leader. You need to empower yourself, you don't need someone else to empower you. It's not unique, it's not unique. Every community has gone this way. It's not unique. Every community started out being on the outskirts, and then empowering themselves from within. But you cannot accomplish your feat if you backfire, and if you put yourself down because of some ideological differences that you have, everyone disagree from time to time, but you all want the same thing for your community, so you can unite together around your political strength and your political empowerment. Every mosque should register someone to vote, every family should be registered to vote, every community resident should be empowered to participate in the political process, because the political process will determine how far your community goes. It's gonna determine what your strength is. And you need that strength, because let's be honest, never always have a mayor like me. So the question is, how many mayors been here? How many mayors have walked down Coney Island Avenue? How many mayors can you call after a full day at 8:30 PM and say, "We want you here"? So I want to turn it over, I want to turn it over to your question, but I want to tell you something. Hey folks, I'm not perfect. In fact, I'm perfectly imperfect. There's nothing special about me. I've been fortunate and lucky to have people to come together, and say, "We going to stand with you." This is the thing, the hardest 12 months of my life, 15 months of my life. I was facing 35 years in prison. Think about that. Just for doing my job. So it's not like they, it's not, I'm not who they want. They want you, I'm just in their way. And I got up every day and I did my job, I fought for you, working class people of the city. And I'm going to continue to do that. And God see fit for me to do it for another four years and let it be. If not, I know I did everything possible for the working class people of the city from every community in this city. I stood for you all, and I stood in the way of those who wanted to harm you. So now I open up to any questions you want.
There's one more thing I just want to add. I don't know how many of you know the Gracie Mansion, I don't know how many people who visit there. In the past, we didn't have that many invitations. In the past, you may get an email, the mayor invites you, but someone probably gonna call you, "No, don't call, we're not in the space." Never happened with this mayor, you can contact directly to his team. We have his team, Commissioner Cradman, he can correct that right, sir? He will make sure, please stand up. He will make sure, if the mayor invites you, nobody can deny, you will go see the mayor. Nobody can make a phone call on the side, because he's a people's man, he stand with the people, and we appreciate that. I want to acknowledge Mr. Latif from the Pakistani Customs Office, thank you sir. Our proud sponsor for today, Divya Mustafa, thank you sir. And I'm not calling for me defenders, always with the mayor and the community, thank you sir. Thank you, sir. And Ms. Machine, Jazza Restrom, always here for the community. Thank you. Before wasting any more time, the floor is yours. Please go to your questions. Captain Etsham Khan, please.
I'm not a white person. I'm from the school in Queens and I want to thank you very much for giving us Eid. It wasn't the day, but you gave us the Friday. Thank you so much. My first question to you is, Moharam will be starting on the 27th of this month. And we have a big parking problem in our mosque in Alcoi. So I would like to ask you if you can help us with the parking in Jamaica Hospital. You know, there's a public, I think it's a public hospital and there's a lot of parking.
All right, the question is one or three precinct? Is that the one or, what precinct is that? One or seven? Let's first let's see the, anything, let's coordinate to, if we need to close down the street for the park in the street in front of the, it's in front of the mosque?
Yes, on the side street.
So whatever we need to do to get you to park it, we're going to do. So we need to go there and do an analysis. What time is the program?
It's starting on the 27th and it goes on to 54th Sunday.
So it's a pleasure to have you here in the Pakistani community. So basically, my question is that most of the high schools or middle schools in Brooklyn or all over New York does not give us halal food for lunch. So it doesn't make a possibility for you to get halal food so we could eat the halal food and the meat over there.
I know we have, two things, two things come up. One, we have made halal food available in schools. DOE, can you talk to me about that, how much? And second, the most important thing that we're looking at is that just as we acknowledge other food from other communities, you should be able to have your own system of halal food. You should be able to make sure certified and not just someone just putting a sticker on it saying it's halal food. There are real procedures in place to, when you're dealing with other of, 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 of communities and certifying their food, we need to do that safely for halal food as well. But I'm talking about, talking about that.
There is an office of food and nutrition services that can verify that we can have halal food for you. I want, I have a colleague sitting near a very aisle who will get your information, give you answers. And we promise we will follow up with you and we will make sure.
I would like to say a great word for Rohil. He's done a great job and he's bringing, of course, you.
Being here, this is a great deal. Thank you very much, Rohil, for you, great services for the community. And my relation with the Pakistani television, I believe, AMY News, I am Asit Jamal. And my question is for safety and community relations. So as a safety remains a top concern across New York City, how is your office working with Pakistani American leaders to build a stronger police community trust while addressing the, the rising issue of hate crimes or bias incidents?
And so, we have witnessed an increase in hate crime in the Muslim community and the Jewish community. And I think it's a slight tick in the LGBTQ plus community. So we're seeing an increase in hate crime. And that's why we are not allowing just a downplaying of hate crime. If it's a hate crime, we're going to investigate it. We're not going to try to fudge the numbers. We're going to say, let's investigate it and it is what it is. Second, it is imperative that all of our prosecutor's office, I believe, should have a no plea bargain for hate crime. You commit a hate crime, we're not going to drop it down to a harassment and let people get away with it. We should have a no plea bargain for hate crime. And I see everybody's voice to do that. But when it comes down to public safety, there was a great brother that was in this community saying, he wanted to do a Muslim security patrol. And I was bar president at the time. He got a lot of pushback for it. Some of the older members here will remember when he tried to do it. And we helped him, did the vehicles, helped him get the support that he needed to make sure we have a Muslim patrol. One way to keep the city safe is to make sure that put in place a security like other communities, the Assellers, Sharm Society, all of these communities, the men have stepped up and said, we want to protect our community in collaboration with the police department. We have a great police department, community affairs, but there's nothing stopping but that extra layer. You know your community, you know how to police your community. And to be honest, men should not want the police in their communities only. They should take the role of protecting the children and families of the community. And that is one way to make sure we keep our city safe. So I want to encourage you to create a real security patrol. I will bring in security patrol, volunteer security patrols from other communities to sit down and assist you in the process. But there's no reason we don't have a Pakistani security patrol, a Muslim security patrol. There's no reason it doesn't exist. No one is going to be more invested in protecting the children and families of their community than the people that live in that community.
My question, I served the country. I am almost retired or close to retirement because I passed my NYPD test back in 2003. But then I went to the military and served with them for about four years and became a language instructor with them and all that. And my son now is fulfilling my dream. I serve the country and he is serving the city. What my question is very simple and straightforward. What will your administration do for the South Asian community and their leadership roles in the city agencies or city jobs such as NYPD, FDNY, DOE, or any other of those agencies or MTA for that matter? What are your plans for that for the South Asian community and the leadership roles?
One, two, okay, great. First of all, you know, I think there's nothing more significant than to see your son, you know, becoming a member of the law enforcement community. I think it's important. And in city government, we had the, we had the ballot. I'm sorry, Commissioner Molina, how many jobs you have opened?
Nineteen thousand.
We have nineteen thousand jobs open. In the city, nineteen thousand jobs. This is such an opportunity, such an opportunity in every area you can think about. If, if you want to get the services that you deserve and you really, you're fighting for, because the power of a community is the ability to get the resources out of agencies. So let's do what you did, encourage your son to go into law enforcement. We need and continue to need more Muslim officers, more Pakistani officers. I think your numbers are up to what, 700 now?
Seven seventy-five.
Seven seventy-five, that's a long way from where I was. But instead of seven seventy-five, we have thirty-five thousand officers. Why can't we turn that into seven thousand? Good job, twenty years of retirement. So encourage to go into Department of Corrections. Encourage to go into Department of Sanitation. Encourage to be school safety officers. Then encourage to take the exams so that we can do discretionary hires. But also, when you look at my administration, we had the first East Indian Deputy Mayor, first Dominican Deputy Mayor, first Filipino Deputy Mayor, first Trinidadian Deputy Mayor. The first career to be in charge of small business services. You know, so breaking down barriers is what I do. And the city government should reflect the people, but we need them to get in. We should not have nineteen thousand jobs that are available. So have a hiring hall and invite the community leaders and, and community residents to the hiring hall. We'll bring out all the agencies. And all you have to do is bring the young people and those who want to change jobs. These are good jobs, city service jobs, and we should encourage people to get in. That's how we make sure they move up through the ranks by being in the department. You know, I'm sitting next to a inspector who came in and continued to excel. And I'm pretty sure he's going to be moving even further before I get the heck out of here, you know?
Due respect, we face a parking problem everywhere because a lot of people have own house and they cover the illegal parking. And we have every day a lot of problems. So that, maybe building departments have the problem that they're not telling them to be that is not your legally parking. So they're not going to be fined and they're not talking about this issue because this is a big problem for everywhere, in Queens, the police everywhere. Because who have the homeowner, they try to make captain more than one parking, two parking, which is illegal.
Go to the precinct council leader and share it with the precinct commander and the community affairs officer, because no one should be parking illegally. But you know, we need to be clear. I don't know any communities that's no deal with parking issues. There's a lot of cars and everyone is trying to find a space. And there's not a law that prevent a homeowner to say he only can have one car or one parking spot. It's first come, first served when it comes down to parking in the city of New York.
He wants to thank the mayor for getting his son the line of duty that he deserved. He's the father of the Bifayas and he, and he appreciates it. He also wants to thank Detective Rohil Khalid for standing with him throughout the whole process. And he did not ask Rohil Khalid for doing any of those things. He stood by himself with the father of the Bifayas to get him justice that he deserved. So he wants to know after the passing of his son, his son also had few kids. One of the kids was eight years old. He woke up on Father's Day and he wanted to give flowers to his father. And he was asking his mother, since I have no father, who do I present the flowers to? So his mother asked him to give flowers to the grandfather and also the younger kids. He wants to know what is the procedure in haste to prevent from future police officers' sons or kids to miss their fathers in the line of duty?
Listen, our hearts goes, I think our hearts go out to you. You are not alone, you have an entire family. That's one thing about law enforcement. Law enforcement continues to stand with families. And we are going to make sure those children never again had to ask that question. We will be there, this, this organization and group. They came to me, they shared with me what happened to your son. And I promised him that day we would give him the line of duty designation that he deserved so his family would not have to go without. There was an attempt not to give him that line of duty, which is so important for the family to be able to provide for themselves. But we cannot pay you enough for the sacrifice your family made with your son dying in the line of duty, no matter what you did. And by apprehending the person responsible, ensuring that he was held accountable for it, is our way of saying how much your son meant to us and how much your family means to us at the same time. We're so sorry. And tomorrow, if you give me your number, I'm going to call his children and tell them that they will always be children to me in my heart all the time.
He sees his son in every police officer's uniform. And he appreciates everything he does. He wants to thank everyone that is here.
How are you? Thank you very much. And first of all, grateful to you to have you in a downtown meeting atmosphere and listening to us, to our concern. Then I would like to appreciate and thank you, Rohil, Paul and young officers to ensure a day and night trying to keep our community safe and trying to bring community close to you. Today, sir, I have a concern. And I would like to, regarding political adjacencies in a line of duty. We are seeing our officers, Pakistani officers, they are working hard. But we are not seeing as much as their ability, appearance, I think, if I can say.
First, we always have to pre-sell the person to. But the mere fact that you have, get that brother in the back, his hands up. The mere fact that you are raising the concern of seeing officers from the community move up through the ranks, that warm my heart. Because years ago, you would not have seen the comfortability of community leaders stating that, listen, we want to see our officers move up through the ranks. And it is, it has been part of my mission of making sure that we continue to diversify the hierarchy of the police department. You have the first chief in the intelligence division in the police department of Muslim descent Pakistani. Never was thought of before, never. You're seeing more and more commanding officers to run precincts. You're seeing more and more go into precinct societies. And we're going to continue to push the envelope to do more, over and over again. That's our goal and it's not enough. I'm the first to tell you it's not enough. I fought for years in the police department with one of the blacks in law enforcement care and the chair of the grand council of guardians. I fought for diversity throughout my entire career. And I'm going to continue to do that as the mayor of the city of New York. And we want to continue to prove the numbers.
With the numbers in Brooklyn's under the mayor's leadership, one thing is diversity is the most important thing for the mayor. Asit Aswan, the commissioner of oath, Sarah Said, these are people in the administration, key positions. But also, we have, never have executives in NYPD. We've seen commanding officers in Transit District 30 in Brooklyn South, the CO the 62, the CO the 72, the XO the 6A. The diversity, this year we're looking just in Brooklyn South. Eight-one CO, Inspector Delrana, Imtah Division, all these people. It's only under the leadership of this mayor, we have seen the diversity and these such.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amad Afidi. I am a president of Harvard Society of America. No question left. My colleague already asked that, but I have little complaints.